Well, we got that over with, let's get down to some serious business.
Did that before the cameras came on?
Call the Lamarr City Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, December 4th at 12 o'clock. Could we have a roll call, Ben?
Nelson?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Rex McCall?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Erky?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to move to approve the agenda today. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We've got two hearings today on the agenda. The first one is rezoning the North Greenwood Estates, namely Ron Knife's area out there. At its November 20th, 2012 meeting, the council set this as the date and time to hear public comment regarding a request by Ron Knife to rezone lots 1 through 6 and lots 62 through 68 at the North Greenwood Estate, Greenview Estate. First filing from R1, which is a residential district, to R1A, which is a medium-density residential district, to allow the construction of two family dwellings. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the rezoning at the November 28th, 2012 meeting, and is recommending the rezoning. The map is attached for you council people, showing the areas under consideration. At this time, I'm going to open the hearing and ask if there's any written or oral objections or comments to this rezoning project. I'll ask once again if there's any written or oral objections or comments to the rezoning After hearing all the no comments, I'm going to announce that the receiving objections, they are closed. The hearing is closed. I'd entertain a motion, or if council has any questions.
Motion approving the first reading of ordinance number 909, amending zoning districts.
Uh...
Second.
Motion made in second, approving the first reading ordinance number 909, amending the zoning districts. Could we have a roll call on that, Ben?
Leonard?
Yes.
Rex McCall?
Yes.
Erky? Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thanks, Ron. I believe he's here today, isn't he? Yeah.
Ron, is there a time constraint here, or?
Um, yeah, I would guess the time is kind of the essence. Of course, with the year and the weather as being as good, I do have some interest in starting immediately. So, I don't know if this is a three-type of hearing deal, or if this is a one-time hearing, but time is definitely of the essence.
I'd make a motion waiving the second and third readings of ordinance number 909, amending zoning districts.
Second to motion.
Motion made in second, waiving the second and third readings of ordinance 909, amending the zoning districts. Could we have a roll call on that, Ben?
Erky?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Rex McCall?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion adopting resolution number 909, amending zoning districts on its first reading.
Second to motion.
Excuse me, ordinance.
Motion made in second, adopting ordinance number 909, amending zoning districts at its first reading. Could we have a roll call on that, Ben?
Erky?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yeah.
Nat?
Yes.
Rex McCall?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
They can pay the building permit fees adjacent.
I'll get you started, Ron.
Thank you.
Keep building out there. Got some good, uh, good housing going out there. The second hearing today is rezoning of Roger Athens-Hivee. At its November 20th, 2012 meeting, the council set this as the date and time to hear public comment regarding a request by Roger Athens to rezone Lot 1. Auditors plant part northeast quarter and northeast quarter, southeast quarter, 17-92-45, Lamarr's, also known as the former Sioux Tools Building, at the intersection of 6th Avenue Southwest and Lincoln Street, from I-1, which is a light industrial district, to B-2, which is a general business district. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the rezoning at their November 28th, 2012 meeting, and is recommending the rezoning. A map is attached, showing the area under the consideration for you council members, and I think you've all had an opportunity to look at that. At this time, I'm going to open the hearing and ask if there's any written or oral objections or comments to the rezoning. I will ask once again if there's any written or oral objections or comments to the rezoning of this property. Hearing no comments, I'm going to announce that the time for receiving the objections or comments is closed. Council, if you have any questions, or I'd entertain a motion.
Motion approving the first reading of ordinance number 910, amending the zoning district.
Second.
Motion made in second, approving the first reading of the ordinance, number 910, amending zoning districts. Could we have a roll call, Ben?
Nelson?
Yes.
Rex McCall?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Erky?
Yes.
Motion carried. A timeframe on this, do we want to approve? I see the Hivee people are here. Is there any time that we need to do? Are you?
I honestly would leave that to you, if you felt comfortable doing it at this point, but we're not necessarily meeting before, or the right way, but...
Okay.
We'll just do it at the next meeting.
Bring it back next meeting and...
Do the second and third.
We'll do the second and third at the next meeting. Is that agreeable with you, fellas? Okay? Good. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Next thing we have is general discussion, and the way we handle our general discussion is we ask that you step to the podium. Any comments, concerns, or good things to say about city? We ask you to step to the podium and then state your name and address. Scott, or Todd, I mean.
Good afternoon. I've met recently with the park committee, and just to give you guys some updates of where we... Some things we talked about at that time. We did a little bit of an overview of the outdoor pool, and the numbers out there, of course, this summer being very dry and hot, were very good. We had over 1,700 additional people go through the gates this summer. Currently, our... The YMCA been busy up there, too. As I told those folks, we've had over 600 more people go through in the last three months than we did a year ago. Some of the things coming up, that they want... Ask that I would bring to the rest of your attention, all the new programs that have been started up there. I have all kinds of things going on, from the dodgeball and our early-out programs, and volleyball, and mini-basketball coming up. Next weekend, we have our 10th Annual Holiday 3-on-3, and it is, this year, almost as big as our outdoor one. I think we have 48 teams coming to town from various places, so that's exciting. We'll have that going on. Another thing that we've been doing, and we received a grant for, because of all the additional programs and things, we have and are making a... Putting in a divider curtain in the gymnasium. We received a grant of $7,500, and we have a private donor that is paying for the rest of that, so we are in the process of putting the divider curtain, so we can have more programs going on in there. We've also upgrading our software at the Y to be more user-friendly for us, but also for the public. It'll be able to do online registration and all kinds of things to that nature. And we are also getting quotes currently to refinish the gym floor and looking at a fundraiser for that also. That won't be able to be done until after winter time, but we're in the process of doing that, too. So, yeah, just all kinds of things happening and going on up there, so I just thought I'd bring you those updates right now. Any questions?
Any questions for Todd?
All right.
Thanks, Todd, for your report. Next on the agenda is a gentleman by name is... Mr. John Stevens, yeah. And John is with the Live Healthy Iowa Wellness Program for the State of Iowa. John, welcome to Lamarr's.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Scott, for inviting me. Live Healthy Iowa's a nonprofit. I want to make sure everybody understands that. I'm not here from the government, telling you what to do or asking you to do anything. But I am going to plead with everybody in the room to take a look, if you would, at the information sheet that I passed out today. It talks about the status of our health in America, and I want to reference the fourth item down on the left, where it says 1/3 preschool, that's age 3 to 5, 1/2 of our kindergarten to 12th graders, and 2/3 of our adults in America right now are overweight to obese, and then all the other things that go with that. Chronic illness is a number-one issue in America right now, and I'm so thankful that your county and your city is being proactive. You have a wellness coalition led by the hospital, Public Health. We have people like the YMCA, Hivee, a lot of folks involved. And what they're using this year as a spear to pull everybody together is Live Healthy Iowa. I'm the outreach coordinator for Live Healthy Iowa. I'm the only one in the state of Iowa. I travel all 99 counties. I'm on a five-year mission to work with the governor to make Iowa the healthiest state in America. This is year three. I've been to 57 counties. 55 have been forming wellness coalitions and doing marvelous things in a grassroots manner. When I look at your county, Plymouth County, you need to understand that we have counties that are in the top half doing pretty good, and we have counties in the bottom half not doing so well and need some support. Where do you think you're at?
I hope on the top.
You're in the bottom half. You're below the state average when it comes to inactivity. You're below the state average when it comes to obesity and chronic illnesses. So, we need all of you to step up and do your part, I know you will, to help lead a grassroots movement. I also passed out our program that we... That we utilize to transform lives. It's called the 10 Week Challenge. And when I meet this afternoon with your wellness coalition, they're going to be talking about how the 10-week challenge can be rolled out in January as part of a New Year's resolution for all of your businesses in town and your school districts. And I hope that the city council can be leaders in this movement. Think about the people you love, your family, your friends. Think about being a captain yourself and forming teams, and I challenge you to be a part of this movement. Our goal this year is to involve at least 10% of the county. We call that a tipping point. You're at about 1% now. Last year, you were 1%. I challenge you to try to work towards 10% of your county being involved in this wellness movement in January. I know you can do it. Last year, we had people, or counties, rather, who were at 1%, just like you, and this past year, they went from 1% to 20%. And you see the ball rolling, you see the change happening, and it's because of leaders like yourself, so I thank you. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for John on this?
On the percentages you're talking about, the lower 50%, what is... What's the device being used to gather that information?
Public Health does their assessments, their needs assessments. They are the ones who derive per county in Iowa what the numbers are.
So, only people who have sought healthcare?
No. They... It's a canvassing of your county.
Okay.
It's a... It's a very systemic... The numbers are pretty valid. And I wanted you to know, I should have said, all the numbers on this page are from the Center of Disease Control. They are facts. Okay? It's pretty frightening. We need to... We need to be a part of the solution, so thank you.
John, Scott?
Yeah, before John leaves there, I think the city should take a proactive role. Todd has done it, I don't want to misquote, three consecutive?
We actually did the Live Healthy Iowa before I got here, but it... We went for 10 straight years that we have done it in Lamarr's, and last year was the first year we did not do it. As Scott and I met with John and the rest of the Coates County Health Planning Committee, I kind of explained some of it was, the people weren't proactive on their own. Literally, I did everything for them. I registered them. I kept track of things for them. Many people, in the last year that we did it, they would register, and that was it. They never touched a button after that. They never touched a exercise program. They never did anything. And so, as Scott and I and John talked, we're trying to get people to be more proactive, be... Take ownership in the program themselves. It is pretty easy to go online and register, and the folks out at the meeting that John and I are going to right now, they don't know it, but I've already signed us up. We are in a group already. The city of Lamarr's is set up to become a group online, and we will put that out there in our registration information and get it out there to everybody.
So, I did misquote that. It's been the Y, but the point is that Todd cannot be the lone captain. We need to support what he is doing through this program. And as John mentioned, I think we all need to take ownership in it and be active in it. So, I'd like to work with you, council, as the days and weeks ahead of January come about to see what we can put together as far as greater city involvement to assist Todd on this program.
Thanks a lot, John. We appreciate you coming up and giving us a breast of this. Okay, moving on. Thumbs up over, John?
Nothing.
John Leonard?
Not today.
Nothing today.
Rex?
Program's been going on for a couple of years now, but I'd like to recognize the CBP program. Four years ago, it was just a dream, and then we got a manager, and that program, Jessica runs it. She's going to be lucky enough to move into a new building that's been donated right next to where the city is sometime next year. But that's run on all hotel-motel tax dollars. It's also run by local citizens and meet on a monthly basis. She's been able to get a number of grants to do advertising, and she's working very hard at it, and, you know, we've got the new website that partially paid for by the CBP. So, I think for some program, kind of getting off the floor and doing what it's supposed to do, that program has done a wonderful thing.
Thank you, Rex, and I would concur 100% on that. The thing I've noticed on the CBP, since we have formed it, is the fact that down at the state of Iowa, they even recognize now where Lamarr's is at, and she's done a lot of work down there. They have a Northwest program, or a group, that meets, I think, regularly, and I think she now is the... Is it the vice president? Is she here? Is she not here?
Vice president this year.
She's vice president this year of the Northwest Iowa League, and so they've done a great, great job, and they've... We just got done hosting all of Northwest Iowa Group here in Lamarr's for a day, and a lot of them came in the night before, about three weeks ago or a month ago, so it's a program that's been well worth it, and they're doing a lot of great things for the city of Lamarr's. Thanks, Rex, for bringing that up. Ken?
Just to comment on the Christmas Parade last Saturday night, another event that everybody looks forward to and only a few people work at, but anybody wants to volunteer, I know they're looking for younger members to help them keep that together. The committee's getting pretty old, but it's a very nice event in town. I think everybody enjoys.
A great turnout.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the consent items, which is D. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of those items unless a request is made prior to the time the council votes on the motion. Today, we have six of them. Approval of the November 20th, 2012 regular meeting minutes, a list of bills, period ending 11-30-12. Number three is renewal of a liquor license for the Four Brothers Bar and Grill. Number four is the Wells Enterprise hangar lease. Number five is the Dogwood Industrial Park paving or the Rice Project, and number six is a wastewater treatment plan improvements. Is there any one of these items that any council member wants to pull or talk about before we vote on?
The Wells Enterprise hangar lease?
Okay.
Do they still need two hangers?
They still need two hangers. They would like to lease those for the next 10 years, with the possibility of an extension beyond that, Rex. The lease arrangements are pretty much the same. We did put some clauses in there about the storage of personal property would be related only to hangers, aircraft, or aviation-related material. Other than that, the lease stays pretty consistent with the past. There is a provision for, as I mentioned, extending beyond the first 10 years to a second 10 years. They'd have to request it and then for that to be instituted.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve consent items 1 through 6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made to approve items... Consent items 1 through 6. Could we have a roll call on that, Ben?
Does that mean that we're approving the special council meeting on the 27th? Yes.
That was right. It was in there, wasn't it? I didn't...
I just wanted to make sure that that's what we're approving. Which I would not be able to attend. I was going to say, we've got... That means we've only got four of us potential. How long is that special council meeting going to take? That should be short. One item, the potential award of the construction contract. But is that the $18 million construction contract, or is that separate parts of an $18 million construction contract? Three contracts that would add up to that figure. Could be potentially three different bidders, or it could be one. We don't know at this point.
It's the entire project.
If it looks like it's going to be longer, we might have to adjust the time, is all I'm saying.
Excuse me?
If it looks like it's going to be longer than an hour, we need to adjust the time for me to attend if John Rex McCall's not able to attend. I really can't imagine it'd be more than an hour.
I don't either, but if it is, we'll...
Well, I can imagine that $18 million takes a little bit of time to talk about.
Good point.
I'm just... You know, I mean, you know, we've... Last two or three bids have been no brainers, too, and they've taken us an hour, a couple times in a row. So, just to... I'm just want to make sure people are aware, if that's what we're voting on in the consent. We can certainly start at 11 with that. No, let's start at noon, but let's just make sure we're... We should be able to know when we get the bids in, right? If we've got anything that might be a conflict right away. Yes, the bids would be received a week prior. Right. Well, it's in your agenda, the 20th.
So, we can determine the time at that...
So, by the 26th, we can determine if we got a problem. Right? We thought we'd stay away from the day after Christmas, which is 26th, so we went to the 27th. If you feel it would be better on Friday, the 28th, that'd be optional.
26th does work, but 27th or 28th did not work for me.
I see.
Okay, you want to go?
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
We've got to have at least a quorum. Well, that's one thing, and that's fine. I just think if that's... We just got to make sure that you guys are comfortable when you get the bids in on the 20th, that it's a no-brainer. If it's not a no-brainer, because they're very close and all this kind of stuff, and we've got issues, you guys got to be aware that you might have to move to a different date. Okay. Is that fair enough?
Did I agree with everybody?
I have all the confidence in the world in the four of you.
Well, that's because you don't want to vote for 18.
Yeah. Was that planned, John? Okay. Motion made in second. Can we have a roll call, Ben?
Nat?
Yes.
Erky?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Rex McCall?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, the next item is action items under E, and the first one is financing the wastewater treatment facility improvements. The city staff, council, finance committee, council wastewater committee, Bolton and Mink, Chip Schultz, fiscal agent, and John Danos, bond counselor, have been discussing financing of the city's wastewater treatment plan improvements. It's recommended is to set December 18th for the public hearing on the proposed financing. The financial impact is the sewer rates will be adjusted to pay portion, and the sewer user agreements with Wells and Deans will pay the rest. Is there any questions on this from the council?
Are we closer to having those signed by Deans and Wells?
We have a wastewater services agreement that has been edited by Wells and Deans. We have yet to get review comments from John Danos. However, unlike last time, we've got movement, but we've got the document. I've done a cursory review of it, and it looks like all of the provisions that came A) out of the facility plan and B) out of our smaller drafted user agreement dealing strictly with the one component, which was the capital charge, that looks to be incorporated. So, we do have it. Drop-dead date that we would need this, to me, would be the first of the year. Bill informs me that the fiscal agent also needs it in order to sell the bonds, so we will have to make a link between, really, the efforts of John Danos doing the review of this document, and then the fiscal agent providing the proceedings and so forth on selling bonds. So, I don't know.
We can start the hearing process before that, though?
I think so. Absolutely no problem. Yes.
Any other questions?
Motion adopting resolution number 12-87, establishing December 18th, 2012, at 12:00 PM for a public hearing on sewer revenue loan agreement in the principal amount not to exceed $18,900. $18 million.
Nice try, though.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, adopting resolution number 12-87, establishing December 18th as a 2012 at 12:00 PM for a public hearing on a sewer rental... Or, excuse me, a sewer revenue loan agreement in the principal amount not to exceed $18,900,000. Can we have a roll call on that, Ben?
Nat?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Erky?
Yes.
Leonard? Yes.
Rex McCall?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm trying to keep the number eight.
And we got all the zeros in there, John. All right. Okay, number two under the action items is the sewer rate ordinance. At its November 20th, 2012 meeting, the council approved the first reading of ordinance number 908, revising sewer service charges per section 5, period O, recommendations of the wastewater facility plan. The proposed rates have been reviewed by the city, the wastewater committee, Wells Enterprises Incorporated, Deans Foods, and Bolton and Mink. The council also approved the following schedule. On November 6th, the review of the rate study, which has been done. November 20th, first reading of the ordinance changing the rates, which has been done. December 4th, the second reading of the ordinance changing rates, which is today. And December 18th, the third reading of the ordinance changing rates, and January 1st, the effective date of the rate changes. Two industries, Wells and Deans, are reviewing the sewer user agreement, and will have the final draft available at the meeting, which Scott just shared with you. Approval of the second reading of the ordinance changing sewer rates.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So, again, we've got it, but now we need to do a review of the edit that they have done to our document. Therefore, I would recommend to you that we approve the second reading, as you read. However, the first motion that appears in your agenda, I would not do that until the 18th meeting, so we can get the advice of council relative to meeting the intent of the user agreement. And one other point of clarification, John Danos' logic, I believe, and that was consistent with the discussion I had with John, is that the user agreement that we presented was purely for the cost of the capital... Excuse me, the capital cost of the new plant. There would have had to have been, as we marched through this process of building a new plant and permitting that new plant, in accordance with what you heard from Chris Swanson and Greg Sint of Bolton and Mink, we will need a new NPDS permit. That's just a given.